Uh, this is obviously stuff I've read.
Need an agenda out.
Yes. No, I mean, don't print one out if you.
Okay, if you have what they are.
Are you sure?
Was I ready?
I, I have to leave at six thirty, so I gotta be at the band concert. Yeah, a little school band concert.
Okay.
What's going on here?
Fairly good. I just, I don't know. Sorry, what is she? She plays the baritone two.
Oh, okay.
I heard this is gonna be a fifteen minute show, I can't be wrong. I get.
I think there's like. Right, I feel like I've heard the same thing that was like, I'm gonna be long, but I think there's more. There's like this early band, which is kind of the sixth graders and maybe some of the seventh graders. And then I think the eight, it's like an upper made an older made in my teens.
Steve Smith.
Mm-hmm, Steve, yeah. He still looks.
We just finished getting back together there, we'll go ahead and call a meeting in order. Welcome everybody, I welcome Kendall. Thank you for being here first, first meeting, our first meeting in person, wow, so it's nice to be, see real faces. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from last year. I mean, issues, corrections, changes.
I didn't notice, it talks about uh, what the ordinance rewrite on February seventeenth. That we're gonna remove the limit on the number of accessory structures based on the square footage of the primary structure. But when I look at the ordinance, it still talks about numbers of accessory structures. Was that something that persisted or? Going on?
And it went to the town board at the hearing. It was a suggestion that it was based on being an accessory to permanent use, I think. I think the board made the change in their meeting.
But when would that be reflected on the ordinance?
Is it?
It's not reflected in the late ordinance.
I don't think so, okay, we'll go with the chart.
You can't try that. Any else? I love the. Issues or corrections, issues, um, put in a motion, nobody through the minutes. One second.
Okay.
In full description, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So, this is on to. Of public comment. No, uh, here. Okay, so new business, short-term rentals.
So this, the board passed this ordinance with the short-term rentals, the way they've been recommend- recommended. But they wanted them to come back to the planning board to be revised. Either based off the standards or the districts. So right now they're still not allowed in low-density residential. But I wanted to, I wanted us to start with this and then look at the future discussion topics. But I wanted to see where you all wanted to go with short-term rentals. It's not a lot we can regulate.
It's kind of a hot topic right now. I saw. Alyssa sent out some information there too, is that the one on Wilmington?
Yeah, so sure versus the city of Wilmington.
Right, so they, and seemed like it was saying that. Depending on how they had the restrictions in place. Correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, but it seemed like it was okay to do it through zoning. Have they through some zoning ordinances as far as what's allowed in each zoning district? Such as you can't separate that out and have. Rentals register once a year separately, not required in other places to do that. It's how it's handled, it's a part of the thing there, but there, it seems to be a hot topic. I went through it, I found several other articles too. Amelia's uh, government gone through and. They had had some problems with short-term rentals and big ordinance happening. A lot of neighbors to these houses were causing, or calling, uh, calling for regulation on those. So they just banned a lot of them. Cost of lawsuits and also it's kind of the fine line is to have a handle on it, what's, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
How do we? What we have is here that's only allowed in low-density residential. Enforcement of that and being able to understand and recognize what's at all. I mean, like, how do we know what they, because they're not coming, they're not gonna come to the planning board and go through the zoning. Ninety-five percent of the time to be a short-term rental. Or am I, am I missing, my thinking wrong in that? So not, most of the time it's just gonna be, somebody buys a house, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna short-term rent.
Just like Airbnb.
Yeah. So like, I guess what, like, what is the, what is the board looking for us to do? In, in terms of that, of how we can enforce it? I'm not reading that thing, we can, we can, we can do the things we have, or they have to come, they have to come and want to build a new. You know, or, or somebody has to recognize that it is a short-term rental and come complain to the town. Right, am I thinking, is that how, um, is that, am I thinking that correctly?
Yeah, that, that's how I think that, I mean, you can't do a.
If you can't make a registration of business or anything to that, to that effect, how do you know what they are?
If they needed, if they needed some type of zoning permit and. Or did something with their building, or maybe they would, maybe then that would send it to something. But I think if somebody just bought, bought a house and then turned it into one tomorrow, I don't think we would know.
Right, unless complaints, I would say.
Unless it's a complaint here.
Or unless you're gonna proactively go through the listing, like Airbnb.
The R B G.
I believe Atlanta, I mean, I don't know if this relates at all, just past some sort of ordinance where, or law that. People could only own one separate residence as a full-time, like, short-term rental. And then they could have a second one, but it had to be part of their primary residence. So limiting the number of it could kind of reduce, but I don't know if that's something.
That's, the way I read, the way I read that article from, was the way that was sent out.
Mm-hmm.
The, this, when it's shorter versus standing Wilmington, the state against the 160D then.
Well, I think, like, it's specifically in 160D, it talks about you can't uh, require the owner to obtain any permit or permission. And uh, and so you can't uh, you can't restrict them at all unless they need these other, these other violations. Like you have a certain number of violations within a twelve-month period or a certain number within a thirty-day period. So we could always look at that as something. Um, but in general, from my reading, that, that the property rights are well-protected.
Mm-hmm.
In North Carolina, so the part that got struck down, well, they struck down the whole ordinance for the city of Wilmington. But the part that they said was, was not, was against the law, was the one against 1CCB where they had to have. The register with the city or permit process. But they still struck down the whole ordinance, so it's questionable whether you can still do the other things. Like they had a, a cap of two percent of the parcels could be used for short-term rentals. And um, this, uh, distance in between properties had to be four hundred feet.
And when the board sent this back to the planning board, one of the suggestions they had was that. We consider them looking at it as secondary to the primary use.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of places that have, um, they differentiate between whether it's an accessory used to your primary residence. Or like the place where the owner lives.
Mm-hmm.
Or whether it's a whole-house rental. So um, I think Asheville restricts whole-house rentals to like their resorts. But you can have an apartment within your primary residence. In more districts, so we could look at that.
I saw a TV news article about where these corporations were having a whole suite of houses. Some of the homeowners associations, but in their homeowners agreements where if you bought a house in there. Homeowners association, you had to live in there one year, I think, that's two years in that place. Before you could rent it out, trying to stop those corporations from. So, but that's only within the homeowners association in that district. And, you know, I, I'm not, I don't know that there's bad things. Just like anything, somebody's gonna abuse the, the use, you know. Short-term rentals, I think, are great. Circumstances that can cause problems.
Yeah, so you need to look at that, what are the pros, what are the cons? Like what, what are the problems we're trying to solve by regulating?
Right, and try to.
Can we say again what's town board, ordinance?
Planning board should consider having, allowing them when they were an accessory used to the primary use. We have that a little, if you think about like garage apartments.
Cannot allow them to do a case or allow them in low, low residential areas. Because they're not allowed in low-density residential areas right now.
I think that's, I think that's up to the planning board to talk about how that would be implemented. If that were by districts or all across the board. I mean, there are, there are parcels that that would work and there are parcels. You couldn't do it unless you rented a room in your house.
But how do you enforce them yet? No, I mean.
Well, and maybe we need to have John, Joan Esken at one of these to talk about enforcement of it.
That would be tricky.
Well, I think that most people are going to say like, well, what's allowed? Like, by the book, I would not do it if it's not allowed, you know? So, so just having the ordinance in place would prevent some pieces from being in. It wouldn't prevent others, uh, and then enforcement would be a problem potentially. But if you have nothing there, you can't do nothing, you cannot even try to, because there's nothing there.
Like how often there are zoning ordinances enforced outside of there before they come to us and get approved?
True.
Maybe that would do them the next, the next, no, I mean, because we have them here now, but they have to be approved through, they can't be in certain areas. It's gotta be after. That's weird.
I think the town should probably be proactive.
Yeah, especially looking at how house, housing prices that are rising in the town, you know, um, the housing availability is, is really limited. So if you pull more of those off of those long-term rental or homeownership track, then that's gonna, that could potentially make that worse. Those are the drawbacks in short-term rentals. But that wouldn't be an issue with it being an accessory to a primary residence. What could be an issue with that is like parking, a lot of times people complain about parking, there's cars all over the place. So I think that in our current one, it says you have to have a certain number of parking spots per bedroom.
Two spaces for the unit must be provided, one additional space must be provided for each bedroom.
Yeah, so I think you can regulate that, so far that's allowed to do that. And um, even with 10160D, if there's a number of violations, you can shut it down. So. I mean, you could still use those tools to limit it, like, look at the, look at the drawbacks of having them or the problems with it. And try to have specific things to deal with this problem instead of the same short-term rent is bad. You know? I think we can still do the parking. And um, complaints or violations.
Um, so, he's listening. Think. Um, looking at changes to. Return to, to not, not the limits. Just, they're not asking us to do that, they're just looking at.
I think they want us to look at reg- regulations and districts.
Well, I would support allowing it as like a secondary use to a farther residence in practically any place. I don't know if you would feel that way or not. But I like the idea of limiting like whole-house rentals to a few different areas.
I don't know if this is allowed, but maybe if they're under a, if it's under a certain square footage. It could be allowed.
Allowed?
Yeah. Oh, I hear that's what they're saying. Now, I use, I use zone and say, you know, you can have it what you can.
Do you think, um. The, this probably is, or somebody. Yeah. This is gonna happen, it's really.
We can certainly look at other places to see. Who's revised this recently, like, trying to tackle it, tackle their housing problem. But. I think I kind of need direction on where we want to go with this because.
You know, Highlands is depending on.
Oh, are these residences in there, okay?
It's been, they've been struggling with it, I'll be, they passed something and then.
Yeah, I read about that.
So I think there, there will be more coming, I mean, I think back to the, the main impact, I mean, that, is that it takes away housing from families who need a long-term rental. Is there any way to incentivize someone who wants to, to make longer tenants? Is there any way to, you know, I don't know, maybe build more affordable housing to help balance out the stock?
Yeah. I think that's the hardest part of writing, I mean, I think, yeah, the party side of the regulator always or Vincent, like, things like that. There's none from the consequence of taking the housing out of.
Right.
That's, that's really hard to step in. Indemnity, you know, we know you have the size and best use for your property, but you can really, you can turn it down now. But we're gonna ask you to do that now.
And on the, I don't know that we would have this afternoon, but on the surface, just these corporations coming in and filling the whole screen out. Sounds comforting, but it might be, in some ways, better to have, if you, if you had that, that would change the supply and demand equation. So that maybe some of the other, something would be available for a longer term. I just don't think that, that demands that go away.
I mean, the, the thing, I think the thing we can do, just looking at our own ordinance, as we say, is we can adjust, like. I don't know if we can, there's not much, you know, the parking, that's an enforcement thing, if you're looking at page five thirty-one. Parking must be provided, you know, these are all things that they have to provide, the standards they have to give, they come for us.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's, it'd be an unfortunate issue because the only people you're gonna know, get rid of the nuisance ones, is if they haven't. You know, I mean, because I got people beside me that I know that have short-term rentals, and it's not, they're not a nuisance now, although they could be, but they're not now. He's looking at number five, you know, and adjusting that. You know, if no more than two citations or more than two citations, there's my police department, which in one-year period, property will place on six months probation. You know, that's a, that's something we can, as the, as the planning board, adjust, because this is our ordinance. So we can adjust that, say, more than one citation or impeachment, you know, within a six-month period. Or two, you know, the property will place, you know, place on probation for, for three, three months. And then, you know, for six more a year of probation, and they can have a subject to fines. Or may, or probably may not be longer. That's kind, I mean. That's the only thing I can see. Me as planning board have to, to affect unless it comes before us in a, in like, somebody's taken, taken a random, you know, spot of land and wanting to build short-term rentals.
And happens to mention that.
Happens to mention, this is just short-term, I'm building the cottages of, across from the sort of concrete plant or wherever that piece of property is right on there, you know?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's about the only thing we can do, is, is, am I, am I thinking, I don't try to, I'm, I'm thinking in the way of how this board is structured and what our abilities are.
Yes, I love your, I'm one of those bright minds.
So like, I'd love to do something, but I'm also like, I can't, can't.
I think revising these standards and then thinking about. If there are other things, like what you suggested, Alyssa, I could, I can look into those and then talking about it with, regarding the districts.
It's, it's in low, we're in low, we're doing, they can't, they can't be in low-density residential. Ross. Why, why, I mean, I don't think, like, low-density residential, I'm like, okay, I see why you maybe won't, but. Let's, let them, they wanna be industrial, let them be industrial, if there's a market, if somebody wants to rent it, let them, I mean, like, I don't, that's the kind of thing, I can see, like, maybe I don't want it, like. Or the downtown business district, because they want a loft upstairs. Great, because that's, we, we put in our social district, you know, so, but like, I, I, it makes sense to me why we wouldn't want a low, low-density residential. Um, um, you know, that makes sense, maybe even a median district. Again, this is, these are things that, like, we'll look at, it's not, they'll come in, ask us, and I don't even get to see who else they're trying to put up. But I have to apply this, which is a nightmare, not recommend their, their plan to come through the planning board.
At least industrial. We. Well, I think industrial and business both are just, the point is just to try to keep those uses preserved. Um.
To include those properties.
Right.
But if we're looking to preserve housing stock, why would we only limit it? Why would we only restrict it in low-density residential? Would potentially, like, okay, you can't do that in low-density residential, there's only a certain number of families that could live in all the parcels in the low-density residential. But in an equal amount of the MDR or the HDR, you could send a whole lot more families.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so in a way, it, it doesn't make sense to just limit it in the LDR.
Um, could you divide out the, if you did, like, the accessory, secondary use? Secondary use, accessory restriction? It's a separate one from the whole house.
I believe you can still do that. I was reading.
Then you can have a little bit different. Rules for each. Secondary use.
I mean, I agree with Alyssa, I mean, for city from the work strip.
Yeah, they're sitting back at us, so, you know, do they want more?
I mean. Yeah. Every district you take out of play, I mean, you're. It's gonna get more attention.
But I think if, it would create non-conformities, right, like people who were doing it beforehand. Even if it was taken out of that zone by a new ordinance. Would they be able to grandfather in as a non-conforming use?
I feel like the ones that are in there now are existing. And if they needed a zoning permit or, or a building permit, um, that would treat, that could trigger them having to come in and comply. That's my understanding.
Yes, like any other non-conforming.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's no, like, list or registration?
Yes, and I'm like, sorry, we said, yeah, they're already.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not renting, I'm, I'm, like, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
So I've been, or I've been here.
I'm not, I'm not playing, I'm just, it's not gonna be a short-term rental, I'm just like. I'm building it to sell. They're gonna sell for, but I'm gonna rent it until somebody.
Or grandfather in, without, without additional rents.
Or it's such a hard.
Isn't the parking an issue for the downtown bus, business district as well? Because.
Yes.
Couldn't really add. Like, one of the board members has the, they're legally within his primary residence, but he doesn't have parking of his own. Would you say, like, you have to be within five hundred feet of a public parking lot, would you say that?
So I think we probably need to take the parking requirement out of the downtown, the downtown district.
It's the businesses. Require the parking, the town needs to provide.
We don't, since we don't require any downtown businesses to have parking, I don't think we can require the residents to do it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we should stick them out certain businesses, based on their business. Didn't stick them out one business.
And then if people did it in their home, they probably couldn't, if they rented a room, they probably couldn't even require two parking spaces. Probably do one.
One of the garage apartment. There's a lot of ways to go with it.
This was one that I looked up, um, this is probably of like, short-term rental regulations, which is what you call short-term rental. You'll first apply for it if you're its own. That's goes against like, at Wilmington where they register. Cooking facilities are not. It's about that. Exterior advertising. Residential zoning districts, short-term renters, to not utilize the premises for special events or gatherings. To use. Share, to be. For short-term, which I miss it. Apartment, house. Only a portion of it. Short-term. All that. Can apply for it all that, stay in it all that. If not, we don't think I, spoke to that person, all that. Short-term rental, writers, she'll maintain for a period of three years on this, that all short-term rental lodgers stay on premises. Any suggestions for existing regulations?
I think that's probably easier to talk through because then you can discuss districts as you're doing.
So we've removed the parking because it's too hot.
My thought was to add that if it was in the downtown business district, parking wasn't a requirement. And then if it was a.
Accessory.
I don't know what the term would be, but if it's in your, in your house, that it probably needs probably only one would be required.
A secondary use.
Yes.
Yeah. Space. We can't say no, we don't want street parking. We would kind of avoid, you know, parking all up the street and everything else, right?
No, okay, so they already got an ordinance that prohibits on the street parking.
In some ways, you don't care how much parking you have, just all fringe out your neighbors and interest.
You don't, if they rent here, doesn't have a car, then they're buying, if it's running out, who's running when they want to ride their bike, where could they go? Do we have to require them to have a parking space? Do we care? I mean.
Just in theory.
Yeah.
So if it's a secondary use, same as one space.
What's my thought?
It's a standalone. It's a number of bedrooms. This one's place for.
It does have the name for parking space. When you have to have it like, it's gonna be your yard.
Right.
It's part of a lot of environments that are gone.
Right.
It's gotta be yard, it's a yard, you know. What's the purpose of the parking?
Or if you just said off-street parking. Sometime they have, whether it's in their yard or someplace so that it's to get off the street.
If they off-street parking is required and I don't have the number.
But I would, off-street parking. In section.
Designated. Off-street parking is.
Must be available is probably good. It's a good way to say it because it could be close to public parking somewhere.
Yeah.
Parking, church parking lot.
You need to provide an arrangement. That.
The parking must be adequate to.
Off-street.
Really?
Approved. Parking.
I'm gonna just say impossible, I'll forget.
What? You're gonna say adequate, that's, that leads a lot of.
That's subjective. But off-street is pretty clear.
I think that's the main goal is to. Quiet the street. Cars are.
Yeah, unless we're trying to create some, maybe we can't do it.
Yes. We can say off-street parking must be available, like, one spot for, I mean, it's, I guess if you don't want to do that. Because if you have like, there's not really that many uh, instances in town where it's gonna be a huge house, you know, like a seven-bedroom house. And if they only provide one parking spot, that's really not going to be out of mid. At least currently. So another way you can do it is like one parking space for up to four bedrooms and above that too, or something like that.
Could you say designated off-street parking? And then it's kind of, they have to provide, you know, you can park here, here, and here, but just say designated.
So if you said, um, if this is a secondary use, designated off-street parking must be available in compliance with the town of Silvers parking. My brain has to think I wasn't coming next to free.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, you know, if somebody's coming from that town, they're from a different area, so there isn't any place.
I mean, I know most short-term rentals that we've done, there is always, you know, instructions on you should park here, you can park here or here. No more than two, a lot of times they say more than two cars are allowed. Right, yeah. I haven't stayed in any that have allowed more than two parking spaces or even after-hours parties.
Is there a, to put in permissible to put in some, like, quiet hours. After ten.
Doesn't the city?
Start with neighbors.
So we've got the noise ordinance in another section, that it wouldn't hurt to repeat the same hours in each.
That's what I think, number five should kind of be expanded. Town ordinance, it's like if you violate the noise ordinance, that goes into complaints, because this really is like, if you violate any of these things, that's a complaint. And I get to parties every night, get a complaint, but that's not the case, so.
I mean, just.
Yeah, so I feel like that's biggest point, I think it's found out. Violations of anything. Including all those ordinance. And maybe yes, found out.
It should be like, we want to violate the police department or the other enforcement entity of town of Silvers. Because it could be in some of you know, violations, they didn't roll their cans out, if they were supposed to, to come from, you know. I don't know, I don't know what our enforcement policy is, but it's like, it didn't have to come, does only have to come from the police department.
Right. You could also include the limit, the violation limitations that are in one sixty D specifically, which is four in a twelve-month period or two in a thirty-day period. Or if the property is identified as within the top ten percent of property prime or some. Yeah, I'm usually like, well, we can all do this because it's in the general statutes.
I mean, putting things in writing, enforcement, it's kind of like, go to a campground and no alcohol, who's gonna around making sure you all have a beer and dinner at a campground, right? If you get out of control, there is a written rule that that we can not even violate. And I think that's kind of what, we're not going around, nobody's still been.
I can work, just, just having the rules there. Control is most of it. Giving the, this is now. No, no, I was gonna try to look that up. It's not permitted in the district.
I would be in favor of expanding secondary use, like, if that's a secondary use in more districts, living with it. But perhaps restricting the whole house to fewer districts. With the goal of preserving the housing stock. But that would just be, that is my opinion.
It's less, it's less of.
So allowing it as a secondary use in the district.
Yeah.
But not a whole house.
Yeah.
Now, I almost forgot direction. Yeah, we can float some up there, but. Yeah, what do you, yeah, but I can, and that I think maybe is worth, I mean, with accessories. Maybe we've looked at that, they tried that, but it turns rolling back others.
Right, could we ask the board for a more direction on what they're saying?
Was it a complaint from something like, yeah, I think it was a specific issue within the zoning ordinance, or they were just reading everything else that everybody's writing? Know what our, what our zoning ordinance said about a lot of short-term rental, because it was an issue in the newspaper and people read about it. I wanted to know what we were talking about.
I think people read about that, we had the chickens, and we had the social district going on at the same time, and in an effort to move the ordinance through, that was, okay, we'll take out this for livestock. Um, we'll leave short-term rentals as is, so we can but we'll send that back to the planning board and.
That's, yeah. Busy, busy month, so.
So do we want to go ahead and send a suggestion for those changes to be? Will this here?
And we make those suggestions here and we change it and they approve it, or we, we need to send it whether you have now?
Um, so, whether it's rattle now is done with their part now. So we can make changes. Let's make the changes, get more feedback from them, and then have you all review the changes and put their feedback the next.
And there any intention to do that?
That sounds good, yeah.
I don't want to make a motion if I have, if I have to be specific about what we're asking in that, in that respect. Can we just ask, we're making much to ask for more feedback in that?
And more muted text.
Yeah, I'd say we discussed these things, the parking, uh, the primary, the secondary, the districts. And so these ideas that were floating, where do you want to go?
Yeah, I think that's.
They said we didn't have to make the motion.
I think we got direction.
So, are you good with that? Just kind of going back. More in all, next. In the meantime, feel free to email in the group if you have any, see articles or, you know, what's like my listening. If you have questions for Paige.
Is it permitted enough discussion about topics in email that opened the public record if people requested, or?
Yes, I think sending something to each other is fine. When I don't think there should be replies or anything that would lead to a discussion that could be taken outside of.
Okay.
So it's okay to pass in.
Yeah.
Okay. I know a lot of people have. It's just a good stopping place for everyone. Uh, we wanted to look into that.
Um, Melissa emailed me that the idea to tackle these based on what people are interested in, because some of these topics are so broad. Um, I think that's a good idea in order to move them forward. In order to move them forward. And. If there was a you wanna, you all wanna look at before we look at others. Let's. Do those two. The zoning map. The town's not in a position to look at that next, in this. Upcoming, just a year. I, I've got a quote from with a ground out where, but we're also re-potifying our ordinances and there's. A lot of projects going on, so I think that needs to be pushed out.
And I think that's something really needs to be done locally.
Right.
Be more familiar.
And I'd also like to see how this ordinance works to see, I mean, I know some. Issues with the districts and touching, not having buffer districts, but we can see how. What's been implemented, this move works for a couple of years, I think that's a better way to.
How far people are, how far apart?
Right, and our old ordinance had. It relist with some state laws as far as how close a church could be to. A bar, um.
We're not, is that still in there in some fashion right now?
There, there are some in there, um, but. I'm not sure which ones are state, based off of our ordinance, I'm not sure which ones were state laws, what was the history of how they were in there.
So we just need. Uh, to review that.
Yeah, that's probably a research. Item that. Is. Important that. Always, in my opinion, lower on this list than some of these others.
Put in here, it could be the highest priority items.
Some of these that are interesting. Um, are ones that we wanna put, implement faster. Um. It's steep slope overlay is probably a huge undertaking.
Don't be sold with the.
Us is a little bit more restricted, I think ours is thirty percent and theirs is forty. Um.
Is this something that's not working?
I feel like it's working.
So it's maybe not real.
That's my thought too.
You know, like in this section. We've got, we've got, if a doctor's brandy working, he can't do anything with it. You know. What is it? What is bad? You know, and I don't know if that's a. We just, we just did this whole. Year and a half looking for brandy ordinances. We don't give, we don't give staff any chance to. You know, we're out to force it. Nobody. What are you gonna do? Send me a letter. You know, somebody that's in violation on this. But I don't know if that's an issue or not, it's just.
So do we need to? Like this.
Or, I guess, is, is there anything on this list that grabs you all that you'd like to? Look at next? Or something that you're particularly interested in to. Like native plants would be the easiest one. I don't know how I have a priority list that is.
We can maybe give. It's for. Or a culture.
I actually have emailed the landscape architect that I know about, uh, is this something that would be in the purview? And she is actually a native plant aficionado, so, uh, if this be something that would be in the purview of that and. And ask her like approximately how much it costs, you know, cause we would have that, we wouldn't. Really have the budget to hire somebody for that, would we, or could we find that in there?
We, we don't have a budget for that type of thing, um.
Not be able to find.
Yeah.
To just come. It's not.
Yeah. I could probably do it with a lot of research and time, I met him, but. And also like running it by Adam Bigelow quite a bit, cause I did talk to him quite a bit, um, when we first were doing the addendum and everything, so. He was pretty involved in that, but I don't, I don't have the feeling that he wants to do it first. I guess that, yeah, because it's reasonable, but he expects to be paid for.
Wow, wow, alright, we don't have a lot of.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, Emily, being concerned, no, thanks guys.
What is your schedule like this summer?
I'll be, I'll be gone, like, but I can do, I can, unless it's a weird, like it lands on a certain time, just, I can do a zoom, I can zoom in, I've got internet capabilities, so. We have a June or July meeting. Just let me know, I'm trying to make attempt to make it.
Okay.
But if it's in person, I will be able to. I can do it a lot over here.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, thanks guys.
Bye.
Bye.
It just looks, so the native plant is, we're wanting a list of, like, of options to use. So we have a landscape. List with. With native species and then we had a landscape architect, maybe. Ten years ago do a plan that was a lot of downtown and they provided a list that's been. Spanded on and divided into different sized trees that John Gillespie gives to people who made. Apply the land, when they do those on impairment and they get their landscape buffer. I think this is suggesting them for. Different areas of the ordinance.
Yeah, oh, really? I was, my impression was that, just to make that list, the addendum more useful, like. Okay, these would plug in things you would use for, for like a parking lot tree, cause maybe you don't want things with. Big nuts, for instance, right, we don't want buckeyes in your parking lot.
What if I took the existing list, maybe see if we could give. Expert or two, three to, to look at and to make suggestions, you know, on their own time, whatever. Uh, to get that back and then we can also look ourselves at seeing thirteen. But it would be difficult, not a few days, easier ones. I don't think they want to count concerning that.
Yeah, it sounds like, you know, you have an interest in it.
I mean, I do.
We could team up.
I have, yeah, I have a bit of a landscape background too, you know, a little bit, so I mean. Like plants and so that does interest me, so. I could take a look at it.
The, the list is in the.
Yeah, it's at the very end. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the changes this time around. Came from me, so like to have a different perspective with it. I definitely think the chickens and the beekeeping and stuff, that's pretty interesting and that would be, that could be fun to. Handle.
And then the.
Yeah, and then like the night sky and lighting standards, I find, I think that's pretty interesting too, so. These all have kind of some environmental.
An elevation panel, so maybe if we just start with this last four.
Okay.
Give us a starting place. Go from there.
I don't know that I understand the penalties one, but.
Cause you can. Maybe give us where.
Okay.
Look at that.
Yeah, let's get some guest speeches on that one.
And I did have a question.
Happen or something.
I mean, due to this and. Don't know, but. Is anything in this? Quite, I have a question about like buildings in the downtown. District area in having ordinances for upkeep and what like building maintenance. And I don't know if that is part of the, it might be in here and I just haven't gotten to it, or if that's. Something we don't touch or. That upkeep is not something that we have put in this ordinance, um. We have put in some design standards as far as windows and. Not metal, limiting the amount of metal siding. That type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
You're thinking like more.
I think it more just visually, yeah, you know, like no awnings. You know, and that might be part of it, like. Falling apart and, you know, the awnings must actually work. Yeah, I don't, and I don't know, it's more of a visual thing and I don't. To me, like driving through it, it. It looks. And I'm a visual person, but like. Mismatched and, you know, kind of piecemeal and we'll repair this and we'll repair when we have to. Kind of a thing versus something that's thought out and. But I'm just curious, I could be stepping on.
I think some. In, in the past at least, the. The building owners are not necessarily the business owners, so it's. Who knows what.
I, yeah, I, yeah, I felt that it could be an undue burden also, I think was a controversy to pass, it could be an undue burden on the property owners to.
But it's, I, I know there's, there's buildings that you. But like, that have bat problems, like there's bats living in. You know, and it becomes an issue with tenants and having to deal with it, so. Or buildings that are leaking. And. Nothing's being done by the owner of the building and there's, you know. It's kind of a hard.
There's something.
Yeah. I mean, maybe not right now, obviously, but down the road, I would be interested. What do you think about?
Back to the next time. Good follow. Short term rental.
Yes.
Nothing else?
I need to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, okay, when you say that, okay, I'll listen.
I would say, I did wanna mention that our June sixteen. Meeting, it, it was a possibility if something goes wrong with the town board's budget, that they would need that meeting time. So. We'll know. The. The ninth, if that. The ninth of June, if we're gonna need to move that meeting. And it was followed by. If it, uh, where we, ours are usually canceled, right? Yeah, it's usually ca, it's usually canceled because we have town board meetings on both sides of this meeting.
That's good.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for making.
Thank you.